Good evening and welcome to the November 19th, 2019 discussion-only meeting of the East Lansing City Council. Tonight, we are going to discuss committee assignments for all the committees within East Lansing. East Lansing has boards and commissions, subcommittees for those boards and commissions, and then miscellaneous other committees. In the past, the mayor has reached out to every member and asked their interest, and that's how we assigned in the last, every administration that I've been in. In the interest of seeing how the sausage is made, we're just going to do that publicly tonight. And the idea is even if it's only one person asking another person what they want to, what committee they want to be on, while that's not a violation of anything, it is more transparent to do this in public, which is why we're doing it this way. So what I did is I put together a spreadsheet. Oh, here's Lisa. So Lisa, we assigned you to all the committees you didn't want. I was just explaining, I sent her on the spreadsheet right here.
Thank you.
With all the committee assignments and asked people what they were interested in, and I got feedback on that. And also, the city attorney sent me an assignment list of the ones that the mayor has to be on, and I tried to send that back, but it didn't work out. So how would you like to proceed, council members? Yes?
Roll call.
Oh, that's a good idea. Let's proceed with a roll call.
Councilmember Babcock?
Present.
Councilmember Gregg?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Byer? Here. Oh, I actually don't have an agenda for this meeting here. Now I do. That's, the mayor should have the agenda. Okay, so first thing we have is approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by councilmember Meadows, seconded by the mayor Protem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The agenda is approved. Ah, and then communications from audience, that's a good place to go next. Would anybody like to speak? This is a time set aside at every council meeting for public participation. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, moving on to the next area, communications from council members. We're gonna do this three times tonight, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Yep. Super duper, we're gonna get good at it.
Councilmember Gregg, do you have anything to say of this first meeting?
Uh, no. Looking forward to it. It's gonna be fun.
Okay, councilmember Babcock?
Nothing.
Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to echo what the mayor said. This is a really good thing to be doing, having this conversation out in public. It gives the public and the community an opportunity to see what our interests are, where our policy focuses are gonna be for the next couple of years, and truthfully is just an example of what I think the mayor and I have discussed previously, which is an open and communicative government. So this won't be the first instance of more public process, and this, or this wasn't the first instance, and it won't be the last. So I'm excited to see this go forward, and I'm looking forward to the first time we're gonna do this. I hope it continues long past when I am on this council, so.
Councilmember Meadows?
Just a couple of comments. I'll just note that we decided board and commission assignments in 2015 at a work session and then made an announcement with regard to those at a public meeting, and frankly, that was the way it was always done when I was on the council, so I don't, I don't know that this is the first time we've had public meetings with regard to this. I think maybe we didn't do it in 2017 because Erin came on and everybody wanted to keep their own existing assignments, and you ended up with mostly Susan's assignments, as I recall, so I think I gave you some of mine because I couldn't make those meetings. So without, that's all I've gotta say about it.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the actual discussion item, which is board and commission council liaison assignments. And I think the difference, if there is, and I agree, this has never been a secret process, it's just never been discussed when there is more than one person that wants a particular
Yep.
... assignment. First of all, and second of all, we have some that just aren't filled, and I would like them filled in a collaborative process instead of me just saying, "You go there." Except for maybe Lisa, which I've already assigned quite a few.
Just kidding.
Just kidding.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, does anybody have a suggestion on how to proceed? If you don't have one, I have one. Go ahead.
You know, I'll...
I was just going to go through the list.
That's...
Yeah, one at a time?
Yeah.
All right, let's just do it that way. And I'll use the official list, and I will mention who has asked to be, who has indicated they wanted to be in that committee. Oh, I apologize for my voice, I have a cold, so I can't do anything about that. And then, if there is more than one person, we can discuss it and figure out how to go along from there. And we'll start with the arts selection panel. The only person that I had that was interested in that was councilmember Gregg. Is that still the case?
Yeah, I was on this panel beforehand, as well as the arts commission, and councilmember Gregg was a member of that commission, and a very effective one at that, and so I am happy to step aside for...
Okay.
It's my only chance to use my fine art degree.
There we go. We have 100% consensus so far. All right. Arts commission, also councilmember Gregg is the only one who indicated a preference for that. Anybody else? Those usually go together, I think. Board of review. Now, nobody signed up for this, because maybe you know what it's like. So this, this is actually a vital, a vital sub, or committee. It meets three times a year and reviews property tax appeals, basically. And you have to have some, some knowledge of property tax law, and you have to be really interested in that. Scott Trigger, is Scott still running this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's on, yeah.
Mark, are you interested?
I'll do whatever you tell me to do.
Okay, Meadow, you are interested?
Maybe, depending.
Well, you've got 30 seconds to decide.
Yeah, I'll pass, thanks.
A pass, yeah, it's, it's actually, it's actually a very important, but it's not, it's not simple. And it is, it is helpful to have some experience. So Meadows?
I'll do, I'll do whatever you tell me to do.
I'm telling you to do that. Thank you. Brownfield Development Authority, that one by law or code is the mayor, and typically those happen right after the DDA, so that's, that's that, that one's done. Building Authority, this one does not, the third Thursday in September, so this is a pretty easy assignment. It meets once.
What do they do?
They just look at the properties that we own and talk about them, as I recall.
I'll do that.
Okay, Babcock. Let's put that there, thank you. Building Board of Appeals, second Wednesday, 7 o'clock.
So, I have a small suggestion.
Yes.
Would it be pertinent for maybe the city manager to give a very brief...
I was gonna ask, I was just gonna ask Mr. Lahanas. What exactly is the Building Board of Appeals?
So the Building Board of Appeals is different than the ZBA. The ZBA looks at spatial things on the lot. The Building Board of Appeals looks at construction, actual issues that relate to the code, where someone wants to do something maybe different than the code, and they have to go to this, this board to be able to get that approved, to do something like that. And the building, chief building official will be the person speaking on behalf of the city if something were acceptable, not acceptable, so that's what they do.
Is it mostly commercial, or is it residential and commercial?
Both.
Both?
Building code issues.
Building code issues.
Aren't you interested in building code?
It seems like it goes planning commission.
Yeah?
Well, we haven't decided that I get that yet.
We could skip that one and come back.
Is it every...
Third Thursday in September.
I'm trying not to overcommit.
Okay.
Is it every, do they meet regularly, or as needed?
Once a month, they only meet when there's business to discuss, though. It ebbs and flows in terms of, you know, what the demands are in the public.
Another thing we could do is leave this one blank and come back to it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, Building Board of Appeals, we will come back to. Okay, Census 2020, I had...
Oh wait, we skipped the commission.
Building Board of Appeals, yeah, I'm going on...
Oh, you're doing this now?
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
This is, this is, this one I'm sure is a complete list, 'cause it came from stat.
Okay.
So Census 2020, I didn't put it on this part, but I know that councilmember Meadows is interested in this. Is anybody else interested in Census? Okay, you're gonna be our counter. Councilmember Meadows, count them all. Thank you.
I'm counting everybody.
Don't miss anybody, that's important.
Count them like the revenue depends on it.
That's right, which it does. Okay, Commission on the Environment, and I think I had councilmember Babcock interested in that. Anybody else interested in the environment?
Um...
No, you know what I mean. The Environment Commission?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Gregg, all right. Let's see, Downtown Development Authority, that is also the mayor. Whoa. There we go. Economic Development Corporation, who did we have who was interested in that one?
Excuse me? Did you skip DAB?
Oh, did I? Oh, you, you're right, I did, sorry. Downtown Management Board?
I wanted that one.
That was councilmember Gregg, anybody else?
She's a business owner downtown, I think it's pertinent.
Okay.
Seems logical.
Cool. Economic Development Corporation, was that councilmember Meadows? Did you request that one, councilmember Meadows?
I did not request it, I don't think. Like I said, I'll do...
Yeah, what did they do?
Can we get a brief explanation of that?
I feel like you're the best.
Tom, do you wanna jump up with that one? Let's not use that one.
So, Economic Development Corporation typically...
Typically only meets to discuss tax-exempt bond issuances, which are fairly rare. The last one we did was for Bircham Hills. There may be another one on the horizon here in the next several months, but it's typically a group that meets maybe once or twice a year, tops.
No, no, I wanna do that.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'll do that, I didn't realize that's what it was. That's one of my favorite topics.
As a suggestion, if, this is just a preference, we could have George give like a brief explanation. I know it'll take a little bit of time.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Because I think members of the public might not know.
I didn't realize you were requesting that for everyone.
Yeah, my bad. No, I wasn't clear.
Historic District Commission, George, can you describe the...
Yeah.
Thank you.
So they administer the historic districts. People go to them with issues relating to construction, renovation to existing historic structures, and they look for guidance from Historic District Commission on renovations within the district.
Okay, in the past, this has been a tough one. We have a lot of Historic District Commission questions, so it's important that you go, you can be able to go to this meeting. Anybody interested? Everybody on the committee is, is very well-versed in the federal law, so you don't really have to be yourself, but they do want people to attend, and I was generally not able to attend, and it didn't go over well. Are you interested in the Historic District Commission?
I think I'm set for the time being, but...
I can come back to it.
Okay.
Come back to it, yeah.
Income Tax Board of Review.
You have Housing Commission?
Housing Relations Commission.
No, Housing Commission.
Housing Commission. I think they need to make this bigger. Housing Commission.
So the Housing Commission oversees the issuance of rental licenses and also takes action if there's issues against a rental license, for instance, noise violations or party violations, party litter violations. They could put sanctions on licenses if there are issues related to a particular rental house. That's what they do.
So, I didn't put my name down for this one, but given that it's an issue area that I have been working on, and in fact, I even had a meeting with some interested parties today from MSU and landlords, I'd be happy to take this on as a commission.
Anybody wanna wrangle that away from Mayor Protem? Okay, thank you.
I'll use Stevens.
Thank you. All right, let's see if I can, Human Relations Commission.
Human Relations Commission is essentially the city's Civil Rights Commission, so they protect protected categories in addition to student status and some other categories that were added to the city, so it's, probably does meet once a month, and they do get complaints that have to be processed, and they also do outreach and education on civil rights issues.
So this was last assigned to councilmember Stevens, who, are you still interested?
I am.
Anybody else interested in that one? Great, moving on. Income Tax Board of Review.
So this is a group that has just been convened, they're, I don't believe they've actually met yet, but they, like the, like the Board of Review for Property Taxes, will hear appeals on income taxes. What we hear from other cities is that this is something that is rather seldom used, so I would not expect the intensity of use that you get with property tax appeals, so, but we haven't convened it yet, so we haven't had to use it yet because there haven't been filings.
This looks like a mayor item.
And actually, I'm very interested in this topic, so. I will take that one.
All you.
I think we, we might have some appeals, just because of the residency versus non, and how many days, I mean, if the Ohio State coach was in East Lansing for one day, do we get to tax him? That kind of thing.
Oh, on that case.
Depends on whether they went or not.
Okay, Library Board of Trustees, I do believe councilmember Gregg?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
So the Library Board of Trustees actually serves as an oversight of the library, they actually, kind of like the city council hires a city manager, they hire the executive director, Kristen Shelley, and they oversee that operation in a pretty hands-on way, so it's actually like a management oversight as well, but they hire the executive director directly.
So, councilmember Gregg has indicated interest, anybody else?
If she gets hit by a bus or something, may I have it? But only, only in extreme circumstances.
And even more than that, if she can't make it one time, she can...
Please let me know.
Yeah.
I have a thing for libraries.
Okay, there you go, we have a great library, so that's a good thing.
Bought my house because of it.
Really?
That's...
Oh, interesting. Okay, Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority.
So this one is the improvement authority that has spanned from East Lansing through Lansing Township and the city of Lansing, and it really has not been active as of late. So I would look to our director, Farinbach, to see, is this something that we would want to do an appointment at this point for the, for the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority? Because it is still active, but it hasn't been meeting lately.
Likely not, I think we're gonna request that it come to a session only meeting to see if there's interest in continuing their committee.
So I don't know if, I don't know if we need to appoint someone at this point, because it has not been an active operation.
Okay.
This is actually near and dear to my heart.
Okay.
And Mr. Monberg is here, so.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious, because now the Red Cedar Project is gonna be underway, would there be more of an expectation that those meetings might start to take place? That's certainly a potential. So, I mean, Lisa wanted this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, why wouldn't we just assign it for her, and then when we have this discussion only, you...
I think that's a brilliant idea.
Thank you.
Let's do that.
I don't really...
Mayor Protem? The other assignment that you have is, my computer locks, yours has to work, so...
Absolutely.
Can you open it up to this page?
I can.
Thank you. All right, Officers Compensation Commission, once every two years? Who are these officers? Is that us?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Selected officials. So basically, they set the compensation recommendation for the council every two years. It's typically a meeting or two, and it's not extremely intensive because of that.
And I had you down here, councilmember Babcock.
Yeah, I misread this understand, this assignment.
Okay.
I thought, you know, you signed up for like, the top 12 or so.
Yes.
I sent them with rankings, and I...
Yeah.
I don't want to step on anyone else's toes with this.
No, there are no toes.
So jump right, jump right in, jump right in.
There are no toes, I don't think, on this one. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so that's you, that's councilmember Babcock.
Every two years, great. Thanks.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, which is...
The commission that oversees the Parks and Recreation Department. They provide advice and recommendations and look at policy issues and so on for the operation of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, and I have councilmember Gregg as being interested in this?
Yep, I wanted this one. I've already worked a little bit with the Parks Commission, where they intersect with the Ingham County Parks Commission, so I'm, got a little bit of knowledge going forward.
Okay, anybody else interested in that one? Great. Okay, now for the big kahuna, in terms of time, it takes more time than the city council, from what I've seen, that's the planning commission. So I have two people right now with some interest in the planning commission, that is councilmember Meadows and councilmember Gregg. Would either of you like to come to your senses and let the other have that?
Well, if Mark wants to make his case, he can make his case, and then I'll rebut.
Okay, I'll, I'll make my case. I'm probably more familiar with the activity of the planning commission over the last 20 years than anybody else on council. Over the last four years, it has been a responsibility of mine, and, you know, when I was in the legislature, participated in the creation of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, so I'm familiar with the state statute that governs it as well, and I'm probably more familiar with the actual ordinances that we implement and operate, and which they review and provide advice to the city council with regard to, and I would like to continue to do it, so.
My interest is primarily in terms of zoning updates. We are about to embark, hopefully, on a citywide zoning update, and I feel like some of my insights as a business owner would be pertinent to that discussion, so my interest is primarily in being involved with that process.
If I could respond to that?
Yeah, sure.
You know, I think what is going to have to happen, and I think the city council has to have a very direct role in this, as well as the planning commission, but once, I think you're referring to the new form-based code that may have come into play, we will, I think, have to spend six months at least reviewing that, having public meetings of the community to explain it. It's extraordinarily complicated. I think even the planning commissioners will tell you that it has taken as long as it's taken because of its complications. So I think we're all gonna be involved in actually listening, attending those meetings, and then finally making a decision with regard to it. So I don't think you're gonna be aced out on this in any way whatsoever, and I would hope that, that that's the process we would want to have.
Yeah, I'm, not, not just the form-based code that's already in discussion for downtown, but citywide, I think, so.
Right.
Okay. I don't know, you can adjudicate, I guess?
No.
Madam Mayor, or...
Erin?
No, so, I mean, I think my, my suggestion in this kind of situation is just to cage the rest of the council.
Yeah, rather than adjudicate, I was going to just have people vote, because that's the fairest way. And if you, if we're gonna have a council of equals, you can't just thrust power upon me willy-nilly.
All right, no, no willy-nilly power thrusting.
Okay, so both candidates would still like to be in, in consideration?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's do it this way. All council members in favor of appointing Mr. Meadows to the planning commission, raise their hand. All council members in favor of appointing Mr. Meadows, raise your hand. Okay, all council members in favor of appointing Ms., Mrs. Gregg, Ms. Gregg, councilmember Gregg, please raise your hand. Okay, you get the big kahuna.
Thanks.
All right.
If I get overwhelmed, I'll pass it off to Mark.
And I did want to ask the city manager, is there any opportunity to have two council members on that committee?
Yeah, the city attorney can speak to that, but we have had in the past, I think it was in 2013, I think we appointed two people to the planning commission, and they would attend when they could attend, and I don't think there was ever a problem with it. I don't know if, you know, if, how it worked out mechanics-wise, but I don't, I never heard that there was an issue with it. So there were two people for some period of time. Do you wanna comment on it?
As long as it's not three.
So how would the council feel about appointing both councilmember Meadows and councilmember Gregg?
I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
I am 100% all right.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Hey, I might add that I think, under the state statute anyway, a member of the city council can sit as an ex officio member of the planning commission. I don't know that we've ever done that before, but it's, it's allowed, and depending on whether Jesse would wanna be an ex officio member, there is a vacancy on the seats right now that could be filled by a council member.
So that would be a voting member?
That would be a voting member also of the, of the planning commission. They can sit as either a member or an alternate.
Either one.
Right.
You're gonna be sitting there anyway.
Sorry, just really quick clarify, is that accurate?
Yeah, 100%.
Yeah, interesting.
So you'd have to apply and then appoint yourself?
No. No, we could, we could make that appointment later tonight by, by adding it to the agenda.
Are you interested in that?
Yeah.
That gives you, that gives you a vote on the council, on the planning commission.
More power, sounds great. Let's do it.
But it's two Wednesdays, so they...
Yeah, no, I know, I already, I'm, Wednesday is my day, I already have a babysitter lined up, so I, it works.
Okay, so just to summarize, what we have is, at the business meeting, we will consider whether to appoint councilmember Gregg as an ex officio member of the planning commission, and councilmember Meadows would be the liaison to the planning commission. Okay? That was easy. The next one, the seniors' commission, city manager.
So this is, we have two special groups, I guess, in a way that we've decided should have extra policy input, and that's the University Student Commission, has student input, and the senior commission, to be able to watch out and raise issues related to seniors. So sometimes I think people think the senior commission is only primetime, it's not, it's any issues related to seniors in the community, including the primetime program.
And we had the youngest member of our council volunteer for that, that was councilmember Meadows.
I am the senior member, I'm not the senior in terms of time, you are, but I am the oldest.
Good point. Are you also interested in that?
I would also be interested.
Okay, is that a commission that we could have two people appointed to? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, how does the council feel about both people being appointed?
Totally great.
I'd look at the two people that might want that and...
Is that okay with you, if you and Mr. Meadows?
That's certainly fine with me.
Is it okay with you?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you tell me to do.
I am telling you to serve on that commission happily with councilmember Babcock.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Look at all this collaboration.
Yeah. I'm about to be ill with it. Okay.
What?
Transportation Commission, Mr. Lahanas?
Transportation Commission advises council on policy issues related to transportation, all modes of transportation in the city. They also look at transportation studies as a part of projects that have to have studies completed and to offer input on those transportation studies before coming to council, so I'm not sure if there's any other things that are required for Transportation Commission.
And I... Thank you. And I have councilmember Babcock as being very interested in transportation. It was 11 on your list, I think.
Yeah, well, it's-
Is that okay? Is anybody else interested? All right, let's move on. Good job.
Thank you.
University Student Commission, Mr. Lahannis.
As we talked about, this group represents the student voice, so council gets to hear on policy issues from current MSU students. The students are selected from their affiliation with all sorts of different student organizations, and they meet on a regular basis to give policy advice.
And I have Councilmember Stevens. Is anybody else interested in being on this commission?
I wouldn't mind being his backup in case he can't be there, because I enjoy going to that commission.
Okay, so let's add Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Stevens with Councilmember Meadows as backup. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals, which I, oh, go ahead, Mr. Lahannis.
Yeah, so they look at, just like the building board, they look at appeals related to zoning. So the issues of dimensional stuff on someone's lot, if they want to build next, closer to a lot line or have something extended, they would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to hear that appeal.
But the unusual part about this, is the liaison a voting member?
If there are an alternate.
If there aren't enough members?
ZVA?
I remember being impressed to vote.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's the same as the Planning Commission. It's my recollection.
So it's interesting, if you like that kind of thing. Anybody interested?
It's HRC at the exact same time.
Okay, Councilmember Meadows, thank you. Capital Area Michigan Works, the fourth Wednesday. Did I have somebody for that already?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stee-, oh, sorry. Mr. Lahannis, we're not going to finish doing this.
Yeah, so I think that actually, Councilmember Meadows knows it better than me because he's actually sat on the board, but I think that they do, they do assistance of work on getting people into the job economy and helping them with job skills, training, resume preparation and the like. But that's the extent of what I, knowledge of what they do.
I'll just note that I believe, this is a board of commission that I had trouble making the meetings for, and-
Right.
Councilmember Stevens took it off my hands in 2017. There's a rotating chair, and we're actually, for the first time in my memory, going to be chair. This guy will be the chair of the Capitol Area Michigan Works if he's reappointed by you tonight.
And if the vote goes in that way, but typically, yes, there has been a rotation.
Okay, so we'll put the Mayor Protem in there. And Capitol Area Transportation Authority, CADA. Who do we have?
The explanation, I have a question on that.
So this is the, this is the Regional Bus and Transit Authority. It's a separate authority that has its own millage authority and its own board.
So question on this, so we have a-
Mayor Protem?
Sorry, my bad. I apologize. We have a, two seats on this, correct, for East Lansing? And the current seat holder is the former Mayor Nathan Triplet, and I believe he's termed out after the end of this. So we actually need to appoint two members?
But I don't believe we've ever had two council members. I believe we've had one member of council and one member from the community appointed by council, but I could be corrected on that if anyone has any better information.
Former Councilmember Dreheim is a full member, a full member of that CADA board.
Okay.
So we would have one seat.
Okay, so that was my question.
But that could be filled by a council member.
Gotcha.
But that's not part of what we're doing right now, is it?
I think when you appoint the liaison, the idea is that when a, Councilmember Dreheim could not be appointed when she was made liaison, but as soon as the seat opened up, she became, she was appointed at the seat.
Gotcha. So who is interested in this one? Capitol, Babcock.
I expressed interest, but I'm not deeply wedded to it. Again, I misread the assignment.
Yeah, no, you actually did it right. I just ignored your numbers. Because you're the only one who did it right.
Oh.
Yes. Mayor Protem?
I would be interested in this as well. I'm trying to make sure that no-
It's a, oh, that it's at the same time?
Can I, can I say something on this too? But I think, I think Councilmember Babcock, you want transportation.
Yeah, and I mean, that would be a-
And that, CADA has always gone along with transportation as, as one of the two assignments.
Yeah, and by the way-
Unless you don't want to do it, that's, that's-
Yeah, well, no, or actually, maybe Erin and I could share it or back up.
You know what? I think that-
I mean, that would be helpful.
Councilmember Meadows makes a great point. If you're on transportation, having a seat on Capitol, or on CADA's board seems fit and right. So I am happy to relinquish my interest to you.
But if you ever can't make a meeting, just call.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
Well, there's also a logistical, I mean, it meets at 4:00 on the third Wednesday, and our transportation meets at 6:00 on the third Wednesday, and I'm, I don't know how long their meetings run.
I don't imagine they would go.
Okay, all right. Wondering when dinner fits in there?
No, no, just teleporting, which I don't think CADA actually teleports us yet.
Well, you should get on the commission and get that sorted out.
Okay, the next one, the Celebrations Committee. I can describe this because I've been to it many times. Oh, Mr. Councilmember Meadows?
No, I just want to make sure we took care of transportation, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So Celebrations Committee meets with, on MSU's campus with all the stakeholders on campus, including Olin, the police, the East Lansing Police, and various departments on how to celebrate safely, which celebrations in East Lansing usually start on Monday, and then they go on Tuesday. There's some on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, and then there's Saturday.
You can't forget about Sunday.
And then there's Sunday. So, and some of the things they do are table tents and messaging and things like that. So, anybody interested in celebration?
So I've been doing this for the past couple of years and had some good experience with it. It doesn't meet throughout the entire year. It only meets probably every two months during around the game time area. I'm happy to continue doing it unless somebody else has a significant interest in it.
Anybody?
I'm the last person who should be on that committee. I don't get out much.
Party, party. Is that okay? Are, okay, he's not paying, that's fine. We will have a good basketball team this year. You might have a little more work to do.
Yes, it is much more active when we have good sports teams, but there are representatives from the athletic department there, so.
Okay, the East Lansing Meridian meeting, which is quarterly, and that is assigned to the mayor and the Mayor Protem.
Cool.
East Lansing Water and Sewer Authority, Mr. Lahannis.
Yeah, so this is a separate authority that provides drinking water, fresh water, treated water to Meridian Township and East Lansing. The city and township both help in the management and oversight because our public works directors rotate between being the board chair between the two of them. So that, and it has a high degree of technical expertise on that board overseeing it, but quite an interesting one.
Is anybody interested in that? Councilmember Meadows?
Sorry, is, sorry, this is the Visitors Bureau?
No, this is Water and Sewer.
Oh, my bad.
This is the clean water and the dirty water. What do you think, Mr. Meadows?
Just the clean water.
Oh, just the clean water?
We do the dirty water separately.
Ah.
I'm avoiding contact on that one.
Okay, I will take this one then, because I'm sort of interested in this anyway. All right, my computer is now frozen, and I'm going to hand this over to the Mayor Protem.
Sure. So we have next on our list, the East Lansing Public School Intergovernmental Committee, and it is assigned to the mayor and a council member. Could we get an explanation of this, please?
Sorry. The Intergovernmental Committee is a, is a sort of more informal group of, an administrator from the school board, myself, and then typically three or less members of the school board and two or less members of the city council that meets to discuss items that are of concern to both the city and the school board.
So how often does this meet?
You know, it's as required, I think.
Like occasionally.
Occasionally, once or twice a year.
Okay.
If we're going to have a more formal meeting where there's going to be a meeting coming up where we do a public meeting of both boards, then typically we would meet before that to discuss and sort of help set the agenda.
Okay. So is there any interest, I see mayor and council members, so?
I had indicated an interest.
And is the mayor required to be on this board?
Yep. I think the mayor has been on the board, but I don't know if the mayor is required to be on the board for any sense. No.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I have no interest.
If it doesn't-
I'll be, oh.
If, if Russ doesn't want it and you need a second, I would be interested, just because I have kids in the school, so.
Perfect. So I can take over. Thank you. My computer came back to life. So Councilmember Meadows and Councilmember Greg will be assigned to that one. All right. And now we're at Greater Lansing Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So it's a regional entity that does promotion of the region for tourism. They use the room hotel tax from the region and use that for marketing purposes to bring in events and promote the area.
I think this sort of segues with the Downtown Management Board responsibilities, and if it's an as required, not very often meeting, I would take it.
Anybody else interested? Councilmember Greg. All right. Lansing Economic Area Partnership LEAP is the mayor, but we've had, have we had two people on that before? Councilmember Meadows?
I don't think so. It really is a, I think it's a quarterly meeting, and the mayor has always been the person to attend those meetings. I would not say that a lot of, there's a lot of information that's provided at those meetings, but it's, it's not a lot of voting.
Okay. I would be happy to continue with that tradition. Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA.
So this is a tool that used, an act used to be able to renovate or get back to use old industrial sites, but then it was also transferred to be able to use smart zones. So we have a smart zone in downtown where we levy a small millage, and that's used for incubator-type uses in the downtown.
And that's our only LDFA?
Yeah, it's the smart zone LDFA downtown is the only one. I'd like, sorry, TIF, not a millage.
So this is like a very small subcommittee of a, sort of a DDA, but just a different thing.
And they've helped to make the project of the, of the business incubator, the TIF downtown, the sort of the project.
It's a, it's a combined, a combination of MSU and the City of Lansing and the City of East Lansing.
Yeah, the TIF. Oh, yeah, okay. Is anybody interested in that?
I, I don't think so.
Councilmember Meadows. Okay, that's easy. MSU Administration is the mayor and the Mayor Protem. Tri-County Office of Aging, I think we had a volunteer for that.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I know, I think you were on it, right? Did you take that from me? And, but Kelly took the mayor's place on there, and then Councilmember, or the Mayor Protem filled in for me on it at some point in time. There's a longtime member of that, or that board had asked not to be reappointed a couple of years ago, but he just indicated that he would like to be reappointed now. A guy by the name of Felix Bliss, one of our residents. So I think that it, it's not really a liaison position. It's an actual voting position. So I think we're covered if we don't, we decide we're not putting a council member on it.
Yes, I did that my first term, and that is a long meeting. That's a lot of work.
That is a long meeting.
So what's left Felix have?
Well, I, just for, so I will be also vying for the Helping Hands Respite Care, so I would prefer not to be on a agency in which some funds get transferred over, because I end up accusing myself several times at those meetings.
So you're saying you don't want to be on?
But at the same time, having a city council member there is pretty valuable. The City of Lansing, as well as Ingham County, Eaton County, and Clinton County all have elected officials on that board.
So this is where we wrangle over who wants things, not who doesn't.
So, no, I, I get it. And so, but if there was a council member that wanted to do it, I do think there is some value in having them there, but of course, that's not me, so I cannot speak for anyone else.
I think, I think it's very valuable for Kelly to be on that board, for obvious reasons. But like I said, there is an individual who's interested, but really, it's up to you.
I couldn't, I couldn't make those meetings, and I'm not going to force anybody onto it.
I was just going to ask if there's anybody that was interested.
Yep, I've asked. There's, there's deafening silence. Okay, Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. Let's see. Is that yours, Mayor Protem? No, sorry, both. Councilmember Babcock and Councilmember Stevens.
Could we get an explanation?
Oh, yes, please.
So it's a regional planning entity. It has a specific purpose to look at issues that sort of extend beyond the borders of East Lansing or beyond one city. An example of the type of thing they put into place, in 2011, 12 was like a regional urban services boundary, so to look beyond one city to see where the urban limits of the Lansing area should be. So that's the type of projects they look at. An important entity.
Okay.
Anything about that?
Yeah, of course.
Traditionally, anyway, this is gone to the person who has transportation, because the, the major job of that TCOA is to do the transportation enhancement program, which is a, a essential part of getting state dollars into road construction within the region. So it's, that's, that's really the big job that goes on there.
The TIF, the Transportation TIP.
Yeah, TIP, sorry, transportation.
Infrastructure improvement.
County Regional Planning.
Yes. The fourth Wednesday, so it's only once a month.
It does, but actually, may I share that with Mr. Stevens and make him the primary, and I'll do backup, because I have to get back to my paying day job at some point, and (laugh).
Dereliction of view.
Unfortunately, you know.
We're paying you $2 an hour.
Yeah, which is actually much better and far more pleasant than being a public defender. But that said, I don't want to step on, I want a balance here, and Mr. Stevens has a lot to bring to the table.
So Council, so the Mayor Protem would be the, the primary, and Councilmember Babcock would be the backup.
That is a voting position.
That is a voting position, that's right.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yep. Council Neighborhood President has traditionally been the mayor, and I think they expect the mayor, so unless somebody has a problem with that.
Well, it's the neighborhood president's meeting with the mayor. That's what it's actually called.
That's what I mean. They expect the mayor to attend. I didn't mean to run the meeting. Crystal Awards Select Committee, this is a fun meeting group. It only meets about three or four times, and the council person really doesn't have a lot to do. It's more just organizing the meeting.
Jesse said she wanted that.
Oh, did she?
I don't remember asking for it, but I will do it. I like it.
It's an art-ish thing.
Yeah, totally. I'm all about parties and art.
Okay, so Councilmember-
Give me all the, give me all the party and art commissions.
Councilmember Greg. DDA Business and Marketing Development Policy Committee has two people and does not have to be the mayor.
Meadows and Stevens both indicated they wanted that.
So Meadows and Stevens have indicated they want that. Is that okay with everybody?
Do we get two members on that?
Yep. Excellent. Is that, is that good?
Yeah.
Good. All right, DDA. Oh, did we want to, these are pretty self-explanatory for anybody who's interested in DDA, I guess. DDA Project and Infrastructure also, we have two people.
And Meadows and Stevens have indicated.
Anybody else interested in that? Okay. Meadows and Stevens. LAPR respite board, HHRC. I know the Mayor Protem is interested in staying there.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a great organization. I'm happy to stay on board.
Anybody else?
No, but I wonder if we could get an explanation. I wasn't sure what this one was.
Yes, of course.
So, sorry, which was that?
The respite.
LAPR.
Help it, oh, yeah.
Give an brief explanation. So Helping Hands Respite Care is an organization that operates out of a Valley Court Community Center, providing adult day services, respite, in-home care to several members of our community and several members of surrounding communities. It was formerly a city program that was actually taken over by this nonprofit, and so we maintain a seat on their board from somebody from the city to continue to have conversations with them and make sure that our interests are protected along that lines. So I've been serving in that role for the past two years. The Councilmember Meadows was there before me, but it's been a really great experience, and I am happy to continue.
Great. I just wasn't sure what that one was.
Absolutely.
Now it's Helping Hands. I'm familiar with it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so Council, or Mayor Protem Stevens. The Parking Task Force, Mayor La, or city manager?
So the Parking Task Force is more of a working group that gives advice and recommendations and such to planning staff and staff in the parking system on operations issues and promotions and this type of thing.
And this actually is a very interesting task force, because we have so much new parking and it's so different, and there will be questions about future parking. So if you're interested in parking cars, whether or not we should have parking, whether we want to be walkable or drivable, it's, it's a very interesting committee. I'm pushing it.
So when was the last meeting of the Parking Task Force?
I'm going to look to Mr. Farron Bot for that answer.
I'm not sure. I think it was for the Center City Project.
Yeah, because I believe I had had this assignment, and I had never received a-
Yep, it's time to have a new one. So anybody interested? Councilmember Meadows is not making eye contact.
I could probably do this one.
Councilmember Greg, we're allowed to have two. We don't have to have two.
I'll go if, if.
Councilmembers Greg and Stevens.
Although if Councilmember Babcock wants to go as well, that's okay.
I think she, I think her play is full.
Yeah.
Responsible Hospitality Council, RHC.
So this is a kind of, I think, in, a rather innovative approach to looking at alcohol issues in the downtown. It's a combination between the City of East Lansing, our police, and Olin Health Center from the university, so looking at the public health implications of alcohol use. And it also, they all partner with the, with the restaurant owners downtown, the licensed establishments that serve alcohol, to make sure that they're all using best practices and engaging in practices that are safe for the patrons who visit down there.
So who's downtown at night a lot?
It's in the afternoon. It's like 2:30 in the afternoon. Just-
Responsible Hospitality.
Tuesday at 2:30, I can attempt to be there as, I mean, I did have an interest in this, talking to Sarv about working with RHC, but I also would be willing to not take this on, as I think I have a few commissions at this point, and if somebody else wants to, that's fine as well.
Let me just say something about it. You know, we have a staff member who attends all those meetings. These, these meetings really last 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay.
Because the, if you want to give a city report with regard to anything that's going on in the city, you do it at the beginning of the meeting, then they go into a members-only meeting that lasts a lot longer. But the Liquor Control Commission makes a little report, the city makes a little report, Amy Schusler handles all of this stuff, so you can either be there or not be there. If there's something important that you, that we think the city council needs to transmit, then it's good to have somebody assigned to it, but you don't have to go.
So I think I will assign Councilmember Meadows to that, after that wonderful description. Okay, now we're going back to, now we're going back to the Building Board of Appeals, which if nobody has discovered an interest in the last hour, I'd be happy to do that. So the mayor will do the Building Board of Appeals, and then the last one is the Historic District Commission. We really need somebody who's interested in that, that will pull up.
I'm booked. Thanks.
Okay, well-